So it is December 17th, 2020 at 7:00 PM and I'm gonna call this Lacey City Council meeting to order. And we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, in the republic which stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we do have a listed agenda and consent agenda items tonight. Is there any changes? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adopt?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
Second.
Okay.
And move in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll unfair the motion signified by saying aye.
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 And the opposed, the motion carries and we have an agenda. And first up on our agenda is, under public recognitions and presentations, a public service word for Jeff Crane. Jen. We'll turn this over to Jen. Your camera's not on, Jen.
And her mic.
Here she comes. Your mic's on, but we still don't see you, Jen. Are you there? There you are.
Are you looking for me?
Yes, you, you're up first.
Hello. My apologies.
No problem.
Are we up for Jeff?
Yep, you're on, just like that.
Uh, was Jeff able to make it tonight?
I don't see him.
Okay. That's alright.
You're like he's on.
No.
Okay. Um, well. Have this handy dandy award. Which I will give to him. Usually the mayor gives it to him, but um. Yeah, so on behalf of the Parks Culture and Recreation Department and the Lacey Historical Commission, I wanted to sincerely thank Dr. Jeff Crane for his contributions to the commission these past few years. Uh, Jeff is a professional historian and a dean of the College of the Arts and Science at St. Martin's University, and also currently interim dean of College of Education and Counseling. In addition, he's responsible for launching and currently runs our Common Home Farms. So kind of a slacker, I know, but. Uh, though he's no longer on the commission, we will continue to partner with him and the university for student learning, internships and projects for the Lacey Museum and other program areas as well, like community gardens, food forests. Um, we're grateful for his knowledge and his partnership, uh, spirit, his belief in and advocacy of community involvement, and we really wish to thank him for his volunteerism. Um, so thanks again, Jeff, and I will get that award over to him at my earliest opportunity, so.
Great. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Really appreciate all, everything he did. It's hard to believe that his term's already, um, gone by so quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he wasn't, unfortunately, wasn't able to continue for a second term, but the good news is that we do have a lot of really great qualified other commissioners that have been able to come on, so.
Really appreciate it. Thank you so much and appreciate it, Jen.
Yep.
So, uh, next on our agenda is public comments on items not on the agenda. We did have two written public comments that was submitted by noon today and that will be part of our record. Um, and so now we're gonna go on to the verbal public comments. And, uh, first up is Karina. Hopefully she's online. You'll introduce yourself. Please keep your comments about three minutes. And for those who are listening, hopefully if you're talking about an issue, you know, hopefully you can keep it, um, with new information, so I'll, I'll turn it over to you, Karina. Here, there you go.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Alright. Um.
Just introduce yourself and keep your comments about three minutes.
Okay. Um, good evening. My name is Karina. I use she/her pronouns, and I am 16 years old. I am here today to urge you to pass the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. As a young person, I am constantly reminded that I am the future, but as the climate crisis affects my world more and more, I'm also reminded of how precarious that future is. When I was very young, I never had to stay inside because the air was full of too much smoke. There was water that was safe to swim in 15 minutes from where I lived. I could climb trees and play in the forest. Now the forest is still healthy, a wild place so near the city. When I bike with my friends on a hot summer day, we never have to look far for a place to swim. I can still experience these joys that are part of the lives of so many children in this community. But I think of the smoky air that has now become a regular part of summer, and remember that these other things I take for granted will soon become obsolete if there is no action taken to protect the climate. Vote to approve the TCMP. The time for putting off action until later has passed. We act on the climate crisis now or ignore it until it is too late. I will have to face the ramifications of your decision. As a young person who cannot vote and has little political power, your choice will influence my future, whether I want it to or not. Vote to approve the TCMP so that when my generation are the decision makers, we can build off your example, instead of trying to clean up your mistakes. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and you, you do have a voice, and we really appreciate you coming and speaking to us. And so, um, next up is gonna be Sam. Sam, are you? Are you there? There you go. You can turn on your video or not, but you're, you're on mute. Please introduce yourself and keep your comments to about three minutes. And currently you're on mute, Sam. And your video's turned off. There you go.
That did it?
Yep.
Thank you. Right. Uh, I'm Sam Merrill. I'm speaking on behalf of the Thurston Climate Action Team, representing approximately a thousand members on our list. Uh, we appreciate your development of an ambitious climate mitigation strategy for Lacey uh, and the other cities in the county and the county at large. We can all do our individual parts to address climate change, but it's essential that we work together to make joint decisions. Uh, now you have before you, for approval, a detailed plan to implement that strategy, developed by a countywide steering committee. It is the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. The plan outlines specific steps to reduce emissions by 85% by 2050, when our children and grandchildren, uh, people like Karina who just spoke a few moments ago, will be facing the effects of our efforts now to reduce pollution in the next few years. We in our communities must work together to implement the steps that will replace polluting sources of energy with clean energy. We appreciate the funds you will designate for this purpose. Rather than slowing the economy, developing and implementing sustainable alternatives such as solar and wind energy will provide new job and career opportunities, thus enhancing the economy. This is in contrast to continuing business as usual with ever greater losses from severe storms, droughts, sea level rise, and the disastrous fires that now beset us nearly every summer. To forestall disastrous effects on our people, we need fundamental changes in our municipal, county, state, uh, and national lifestyles. Implementing the Thurston County Mitigation Plan is a significant and major step in that direction, one that can be a beacon to other cities and counties in our region. We ask that you approve and implement the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. And then our next person who signed up is Dora. If you could unmute yourself, Dora, and introduce yourself. You can, uh, start your video if you like as well.
Sweet. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, so my name is Dora. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm 17. And I'm also here to talk about the TCMP plan. I just want to convey how much of an urgent issue this is. Uh, as, you know, a child, this really is my future. And I feel that, you know, as politicians, y'all have a responsibility to protect that future, and I have faith that you will be able to. I've always, um, felt that nature was a healing source in my life, and I think a lot of people feel that way, but overall, um, it's a necessary one and we need it, so I hope y'all will approve that plan.
Thank you so much. Uh, next up is Rebecca. There you go. You can just unmute yourself, introduce yourself, and keep your comments about three minutes.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Rebecca McMillan-Hastings. I use she/her pronouns. I am 16 years old and I'm a Washington High School student. I'm here today, along with my peers and other members of the community, to voice my support for the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. This is the most encouraging step towards climate neutrality Thurston County has considered, and it must be passed if we are to do our part in making this country and the world in general climate neutral. Uh, the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan is not free, but nearly every action outlined in the draft plan has multiple benefits besides lowering, lowering carbon emissions or increasing carbon sequestration. These actions promote equity, they're beneficial economically, and they were extensively reviewed by numerous community groups. They're worth the initial investment. Thank you so much for your time. Please take our voices into consideration and have a wonderful night. The issue that has displaced over 20 million people and endangered over 1 million species is in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Stay safe. Uh, next up, we see it's Wayne Olson. You know the drill, Wayne?
Okay, good. Thank you. Uh, my name is Wayne Olson, a Lacey resident. For the record, I am also a retired Navy oceanographer and meteorologist, then taught ocean and atmospheric science courses, including climate change at Pierce College. I will highlight new findings from the scientific community that emphasize the urgency of solving the climate crisis. For brevity, I'll cut the usual scientific caveats. As a result of our continued greenhouse gas emissions, the world will likely exceed 1.5 degrees Celsius global average temperature increase between 2026 and 2042, a few years sooner than previously projected. In addition to more frequent and more severe disasters, exceeding this number assures the loss of many low-line island nations in future years. Atlantis comes to mind. The 2-degree C threshold is likely to be exceeded sometime between the 2040s and 2070s. This is much faster than the Paris Accord goal of less than 2 degrees Celsius through 2100. So passing this threshold will unleash a basket full of more difficult survival issues for our planet. By 2100, our global average temperature is on track to increase between 3.1 and 3.7 degrees C, despite emission reductions pledged by all nations through the Paris Climate Agreements of 2015. Atmospheric concentration of carbon dioxide is now increasing at 10 to 100 times faster than ever measured in Earth's history. This is an unsustainable rate for natural adaptation of most living species. These numbers put us in the middle, not the beginning, of the planet's sixth mass extinction. These kinds of numbers portend transition to more frequent widespread human famine, more frequent pandemics from infectious diseases, more mass migrations, and more conflict over dwindling Earth resources. So, as have been telling us for the solution for years, reduce carbon emissions to near zero by 2050, transition to renewable energy. Most of the nations are now paying attention. All of the G7 nations and the top 10 GDP nations have pledged to achieve at least net zero emissions by about mid-century, except one, the United States. Even China has stated its goal is net zero is by 2060. We can't get to that zero without every nation, state, county, city, and person participating. We in the US are number one with our average carbon footprint at about 17 tons per person annually. By comparison, the European Union carbon footprint is about 10 tons. Average, world average, barely four tons, and even China, now the world's largest emitter, is only seven tons per person, all of which shows that we in the US have the most room to make significant reductions. Thurston County's share of emissions is about 3.1 million tons, uh, per year and growing. I believe we already have the tools to successfully overcome this threat, but we need everybody's help to make it so. Failure or giving up is not an option. There's too much at stake. Our grandkids' futures are on the line. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Uh, next up, we have Eloise.
Hi, um.
Hi, um, my name's Eloise. Uh, good evening and thanks for so much you guys are doing and have done. Approving the climate mitigation plan is crucial for saving our economy, the people and our Earth. Our entire world has been observing the tragic display of irregular natural disasters for the past few years. Storms with unusually strong winds, wildfires that just won't quit. Scientists have confirmed that the increase in natural disaster is influenced by climate change and the events will only increase in quantity and severity as the temperatures rise. Thousands of people have already lost their jobs or their home. They may lose a loved one's life or even their own. I wish that these people's losses alone would spur the U.S. into action. However, as we haven't been nearly as serious enough about this pressing issue, I'll add another factor that the government must have considered. From the nineteen eighties to now, the U.S. alone has spent more than eight, one point eight trillion dollars on natural disasters. Not only do winds of hurricanes damage lives, property and land, but they will lash out and hurt the economy. Trade will regress, cities will be decimated and worldwide harvests will start to fail due to droughts and higher temperatures. This will consequently lead to diminished food distribution. The World Bank claims that in two thousand and thirty, one hundred million more people will be thrown into a state of poverty. These numbers are staggering and truly worrying. In my humble opinion, the government cannot promote general welfare as promised in the Constitution's preamble preamble by sitting idly as the earth fries. When we reverse climate change, not only is the benefit of avoiding a mass extinction, but we can explore the benefits of the circular economy, a process that will decrease plastic pollution and greenhouse gases and increase jobs. Instead of dropping or replacing products after their use, we can take recycling to the big stage. Reusing the valuable materials in said products to better our environment and economy. One piece of discarded material can be regenerated or remade into another functioning product. In fact, Thurston County can help push the circular agenda by creating simple changes. An easy one is to more frequently use the multiple glass processors in Thurston County to dispose of your glass as it can no longer be recycled. The county uses the crushed glass to help with road repair. There we go, reusing it. Rethinking, adapting and flexibility are the keys to accomplishing a circular economy. It is a perfectly plausible concept and idea that would not only better the world, but all of its inhabitants. In regard to the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, remaining passive by not passing it will do us more harm than a bit of change ever will. Thank you. And if any of you would like to view my sources, you can let me know.
Thanks, Eloise. Stay safe and happy holidays. And then our last person we have signed up for is Ella. There you go. Still on mute?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Hey, thank you so much. My name is Ella Bear. My pronouns are she/her. Um, I'm a student at Capital High School and I just wanted to say I think it's really important to pass this plan. It's something that our futures depend on and a lot of the community really cares about it. And I think it's just a really important thing to see from our politicians and it would be greatly appreciated. So hope you have a great rest of your night.
You too. Stay safe. Happy holidays. Thank you for coming and testifying. And that is the end of our public comment for this evening. I don't think I've missed anyone. And so I will go on to our next agenda item, which is under resolutions. Um, and this is the resolution one eleven oh one to extend emergency declaration response to COVID nineteen outbreak and Mr. City Manager.
Honorable Mayor and City Council. So before you is an extension proposal for the declaration of emergency. This actually began in March nineteenth in response to COVID nineteen. And as you know, we are still in the midst of this public health crisis. So this proposal extends the declaration emergency until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, so an additional year. As we discussed at the work session last Thursday, if the crisis is deemed over due to vaccine distribution, this another action be taken by council to suspend this declaration emergency. And as you know, by voting or extending this emergency, this will also continue temporary suspensions of certain issues such as charges or delinquent accounts on utility bills, also related to local improvement district foreclosures. And also this would continue the flexibility with signage as it relates to small business trying to operate during COVID nineteen. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we are recommending that you extend the declaration emergency until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
I've moved to approve resolution eleven oh one extending the provisions of resolution ten eighty-five declaring an emergency an emergency in the city of Lacey regarding the outbreak of Novil coronavirus COVID nineteen in Thurston County.
I second.
Moving second discussion. Scott, can you? I'm sort of putting you on the spot here, but you know, where are we at with people who are delinquent on their utility bills? I know we set aside some some CARES Act dollars hopefully to bring them up and current. Do we do we have any numbers? I mean, what were we seeing compared to, you know, normal times on people being able to make their payments and same same with BNO tax and sales tax? Are we seeing more delinquencies and stuff like that on those as well?
Well, let me to maybe I explain it this way. So we're going to be sending out just shy of three thousand postcards letting our utility customers know that there is funds available at the Community Action Council or Community Action Council for utility relief. So that kind of gives you an idea that there's potentially almost three thousand utility accounts that are potentially impacted by COVID nineteen. So I encourage people to contact CAC if that is really what the result is. Obviously, we need to determine if their delinquency is occurring because of COVID nineteen as per the federal relief funds. But that's happening right now. So social media is putting that out. We're also doing direct postcards to those utility account holders.
Uh, Councilmember Greenson?
Scott, does that mean that so there's currently about three thousand that are behind? That's why they would be getting the postcards? I mean roughly?
Correct.
How does that compare to like pre-COVID though? Like, you know, this time, any idea? I mean, I know it's you may not have those numbers, but.
Yeah, I think internally we've talked about it's about double.
Okay. Thank you.
About double. Yeah. Is there is there any other discussion? You want to add anything to that, Troy? Because I see you sneaking on.
Um, yeah, that city managers, correct. It's probably not quite double, but we're definitely seeing an increase. You know, it's typically between ten and twelve percent delinquent or probably that fifteen to seventeen percent delinquency rate. So we have about twenty-five thousand accounts for reference.
Okay. So any other discussion, any other questions? It's been moved and seconded to this approve this resolution eleven oh one extending the provisions of resolution ten eighty-five declaring emergency in the city of Lacey. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? That motion carries and Troy, you're up next under ordinances relating to reserve designations.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to share my screen. Okay, so for your consideration tonight is an ordinance that will commit certain fund balances for specific purposes. As way of background, we do this as a reporting function. So the governmental accounting standards board really lays out the rules in which we report fund balances and this is a key part of that process. This requirement has been around since two thousand and nine. On average, council has acted on this about every other year. You last acted on this last year, but due to, you know, the uncertain economic times we're facing with the COVID public health emergency as well as significant changes to some of the cash balances, it does make sense to come back to you just after one year. So I'm going to give you a little background on the designations themselves or the categories. There's five categories in which we could designate fund balances. The first is non-spendable. There's no action needed for this. These are balances that aren't in spendable form. So think about inventories and accounts as receivable. It's not like cash where we actually have it in hand and it's eligible for expenditure. The next category is restricted and these are fund balances that have constraints on them for specific purposes due to external legal sources. So think about contracts, state constitution, enabling legislation. One example is all of our police confiscations confiscations are restricted to public safety purposes only. So that is an example of something that is restricted and does not need action by the council or staff. The committed category, this is what we're acting on tonight or what we hope you will act on. And these are fund balances that are constrained by the highest level of authority decision-making, which is you, the city council. In terms of requirements for committed reserves, the council does have to designate the reserves for a specific purpose and the purpose has to be clear enough that staff can recognize when those expenditures are eligible. And council does have to take an official action, which we are proposing you take that by ordinance. And the only way these committed fund balances can be changed is either they're expended for the specific purpose or council takes action at the same level, which would be another ordinance to change that commitment. The next category is assigned. We'll talk a little bit about this tonight, but tonight's isn't really going to focus on this category, but these are fund balances that are intended for the same level in terms of specific purposes, but in the past, and we hope you will continue to do so, you have delegated that authority to designate those reserves to the city manager and finance director. This allows us to react and assign balances as councils acting throughout the year. So we don't have to come back each time and take an official action to ordinance. So this is really a flexibility issue for the city. And then the final category is unassigned. This is basically everything else. These are not designated for any specific purpose and probably the best example is the two-month operating reserve. So these are cash flow issues or things that just aren't designated in any other fashion. So let's look at the specifics of what we're asking you to act on tonight. I'm not I'm not going to go through each and every one of these. Many of these reserves have been in place for the last couple ordinances. So I'll focus on just some very specific reserves to give you to kind of help orient you to the what you're seeing on screen. These are reserves that are based on the fund balance from the end of last year. And the reason we use last year is because that is our last known annual level of fund reserve. And also we wait until the, you know, budget is closer to adopted, which you have already done so. So the budget does inform some of these commitments as well. I mean, we are looking at governmental funds. These are basically the funds not including utilities. Of course, you have the description of the proposed reserves, the amounts. You have the current designation. So these are either assigned by the finance director or city manager throughout this year, or they were already included in last year's resolution in terms of a committed fund. And then in the final column, you have the proposed designation going forward. So the first reserve I'd like to make comment on is the budget policy implementation fund balance. You may remember or the council members that were on council during during the two thousand and five or two thousand and fifteen year, this came about as part of the six-year financial plan. So really this was a vision at council to set aside funds for future needs in case the economy takes a downturn that we would be in a position to balance the budget on a temporary basis without having to take drastic measures. That this committed fund was originally two million when we started. We added two hundred and fifty thousand last year. And this year we are recommending you add an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand, which would be a total of three million. And really the thought process behind that is just the current economic times are very uncertain as we are facing the COVID pandemic and we just want to make sure we're in a better position in case the economy does take a turn for the worse.
Troy, do you want questions as you go or at the end?
I could do it however you like. So.
Let's do it as we go because I have a question. Go ahead, Councilmember Greenson.
So where is that additional seven fifty coming from?
So. So those were funds that came in through the two thousand and nineteen budget. So we had a very good year for sales tax as an example in two thousand and nineteen. So these are fund balances that came about during the two thousand and nineteen budget year.
Thank you.
Yeah, I figured that that's the only way we can put that money into committed reserves is because we had an extra unbudgeted dollars from two thousand and nineteen.
That's correct. And that's another reason we look at the last finished years because we actually know what that balance is. It's still a moving target for two thousand and twenty. So of all these funds we do have in hand and which is why we are able to make those designations.
Can you give us an idea? I know we've looked at this before, Troy, but I don't know. I thought, where did we end that two thousand and nineteen? How far cash on hand through the budget, you know, how much more did we have than what we budgeted?
Sure. So we ended the year with about fifty-four or fifty-five million dollars and that was about an addition of about five million.
Five million.
Yeah. Okay, ready to move on?
Yep.
Uh, these next three highlighted reserves, each of these three were actually planning to spend a portion or all in two thousand and twenty-one. For example, the pension contribution reserve that is budgeted to be expended in two thousand and twenty-one as a way to balance the budget. The succession planning for police, you might remember this is a fun balance that allows us to hire an additional three police officers. We're in a kind of a transition stage in our police department. We have a number of officers are eligible for retirement and we are anticipating that. And we just want to make sure that we have, we're able to keep up minimum staffing levels. And as you know, it does take months to get a new officer through the academy. So we just want to make sure we're ahead of that. Those, it's three positions I believe that are in the budget for that transition. As we make it through that transition, those positions will be removed from the budget through attrition, but this should allow us about a three to four year transition. The two thousand and twenty-one budget includes right about four hundred thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty-one. The strategic investment fund, this is the economic development fund that the council established. This is normally two point five million dollars. We did spend one million for the small business stabilization fund, which of course has been reimbursed through the CARES Act. But without having a complete year end for two thousand and twenty, we want to make sure that those are in hand at end of year before we commit that full balance. We are also expending two hundred thousand of the one point five for the springboard project or partnership with St. Martin's. But this is, and we have heard many times from the council, this is a top priority. So as we look at potentially having additional funds in two thousand and twenty, we will assign those to get to the full two point five million. So the council does have that full full allotment in two thousand and twenty-one as it wants to make investments in economic development.
So Troy, what you're saying is we have not been fully reimbursed yet for that?
We have. We have it in hand, but.
I don't understand why that's not back to two point five then.
Well, I would like to get to the end of year. So we actually know where that cash is in total. I'm confident that it will be there, but without, you know, the calendar turning to the next year and us seeing exactly where those fund balances are in two thousand and twenty, I would recommend that we wait until we do have that confirmation at end of year. But I I'm very confident that that full amount will be there to replenish this fund at two point five.
Okay.
Well, was there another question?
No, I just, uh, I'm still trying to wrap my head around that. We we spent a million. We've been reimbursed a million. So I don't understand why that's not.
I'm curious where it is.
Yeah, it's just floating in limbo out out there where it we burst it, but we just haven't assigned it back yet.
Um, somewhat. I apologize. This is not super clear. So we, you know, we look at year end as we end our budget year and it's really just a recommendation that we don't count this cash before we know it's there, even though we know it's there. So once we get to December thirty-first and those cash balances, you know, it's a snapshot in time. So we do know the budget year is over. I mean, we're still expending money. We still haven't received all of the revenues for two thousand and twenty. So as an example, we won't receive all of two thousand and twenty's sales tax until the end of February. So there's still a somewhat unknown as to what that final cash balance will. So there's still a somewhat unknown as to what that final cash balance will be. But we have indeed received that from the CARES Act reimbursement, but. There's really kind of two months left in the, in the budget year in terms of not knowing exactly what that cash level is. And I would. I would hate for us to commit funds that weren't there, even though I think that chance is very, very slim.
So are you, are you saying these are like fungible goods? Kind of like grain, grain elevator ish, that there's no, we, we can't assign a portion until we know for sure after all the smoke clears.
Well, because the only other question I have on this Troy is that, you know, we, we set aside. Some of our, our operating budget early on, thinking that we're in, we might have to use it. And we moved that over to cash, but we didn't use that cash yet either. So between that cash. And being this, I just don't know. How we're even, we're, we're close to wondering if we have another million dollars in cash out there.
And I, I don't disagree. I, I mean, it is there as we speak right now. But again, there's still two more months with the revenues to be received. And if. Something were to happen to those, those revenues, if they didn't come to realization. Last two months, then we'd be in a situation where that cash may not be there. And I would just. Hate to recommend that the council commit and actually not have the cash due so.
So, so when do you plan on recommitting that and bringing that to two and a half, two point five?
Well, I would recommend.
When do we close out two thousand twenty? So like in February or?
It's usually in the March, April timeframe that we finally have the numbers, or we feel confident that the year end numbers are. Are what they, what they are. So what I would recommend is if the council does approve the ordinance as proposed. The city manager and finance director will have the ability to assign funds, and that's typically how we do that. We'll assign those funds. So what you'll see is one point five million in committed, one million in assigned. Funds. And then when the council takes up this action again, we could commit the full two point five million. It's still a, it still does communicate to the public and, you know, that the, the funds are. Constrained for this purpose. So, you know, I feel confident it still meets the priority of the council. You know, I do admit that the assigned isn't quite as strong as the committed. Action, but it's, it's still a very strong constraint on those funds going forward.
And maybe just to help the finance director, I mean, we are trying to keep the dollars associated with the twenty nineteen budget year. So we're keeping the integrity of those dollars. And then, as you know, we will come back to council and also the finance committee meeting. Once we do close out of two thousand twenty. And figure out where our financial picture is in and have another discussion about what does the reserves look like going into the future.
Okay, we, we can go on. I guess I'm still, I'm sort of having a hard time. Wait, why are we choosing this fund to, to take that million dollars from and wait?
That's just where we, that, that's, those are the funds we identified back in April. So that was. That was before we knew CARES Act monies were coming down to the cities and the council wanted to act quickly to help small businesses. So we identified that originally. So we actually spent those funds before CARES Act money was available. So they, they have been expended, but as we've discussed, they are, have been reimbursed through CARES Act reimbursements.
Well, let's go on and we'll get to the end and we'll, if you have any other questions.
Sounds good. So continuing with the current expense, and then you have at the bottom, the criminal justice fund. I, I do want to spend a minute here to talk about the parks and rec compliance priority reserve. This is currently a two point one million dollar reserve for compliance priorities. And we did identify and discuss through the twenty one budget development process that we needed to. Further subsidize the rack operations. So in two thousand twenty, we're using the last of the Thurston County. Settlement funds for the budget. So that's not available. In two thousand twenty one and going forward, and that amount was right at two hundred thousand. So we need an additional two hundred thousand to balance the budget. So we're taking that for this year, and then this will allow us. There's eight hundred thousand you see before you will give this city another four years to. Really take a look at the operations of the rack and try to identify a way to keep this a sustainable fund. And identify additional revenue resources. So really this is helping us buy a little bit of time to develop a. Strategic plan for the, the rack going forward. So we're asking the council to reprioritize. Four hundred thousand for that purpose. Also highlighted are some additional funds that are in two thousand twenty one budget I wanted to highlight. There is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the strategic facility plan. This is a look at. The use and future needs of City Hall and the maintenance operation shop. The water quality assurance fee, this is the subject sewer funding. This represents year two of that. Rate, of course, we chose as a city to defer that, that fee adoption. Until we get a recommendation from the rate consultant, which is forthcoming here in the first part of two thousand twenty one. So we are funding this. Fee to make sure we have enough money to take care of the current project through general fund reserves. We are using five hundred ninety three thousand dollars of the limited term employee program committed reserve to balance two thousand twenty one budget. So this one. Will be expended next year. And then we're going to spend five hundred thousand dollars on. Of the future police station expansion, both to improve, make some improvements to the current station. Just to take care of some immediate issues here next year, as well as a look at the. Substations and some equipment enhancements.
Where is that five hundred thousand you're taking it from?
That's going to come from the criminal justice. Police station expansion fund there at the bottom, the one point four. So we're going to spend five hundred of the one point four.
Oh, okay.
Sorry if it's, sorry if it's at the bottom of the screen.
It's at the bottom of the screen, so I didn't see. And so that's, that's your recommendation. Have you already put that, you haven't put that in the budget because it's committed, right?
It isn't a budget, but the source of funds is from this committed reserve.
All right, one other question, Troy. The, the reserves that are designated to help balance the budget for twenty one. If things are, go better than expected, which I believe they will. Would we then not use the money from the reserve? I mean, if, if the revenue isn't. Negatively impacted, you know, and revenues are good to cover what needs to be covered, would that money just stay in these reserves?
The way we've been treating those is they've been decommitted, so they're in a sense spent. But obviously, if we don't have the need, if, if revenues continue to be maintained at the level they are now. They'll, they'll become unassigned reserves that will be available for. Future council actions, so.
Commit them to some, to back to what they were or to anything else.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The next one I'd like to highlight is the energy conservation projects. The, the mayor brought this up during the budget adoption. So, you know, we'll spend a whole lot of time there, but the. The short comment there is there'll be three hundred thousand total available for these projects in two thousand twenty one. So we have a hundred thousand dollars in the current budget. And then this reserve will be available for many projects or any implementation issues the council would like to see. So again, a total of three hundred thousand available. Looking at the community buildings fund, the regional athletic complex fund and the street fund. Not a whole lot of changes within these three funds, as you can see, they're currently have committed funds and we're asking the council to continue that. One I do want to highlight is the, this is a new. Reserve that the finance committee identified, and this is five hundred thousand for the College Street pedestrian crossing. So it is currently assigned and we'd like the council to commit these funds. Also point out in the current expense fund, there is an additional three hundred thousand for the same project. So there's a total of eight hundred thousand dollars for this project. And committed reserves. The capital equipment fund and lodging tax fund.
Troy, can I ask a quick question? Can you go back one screen?
Absolutely.
So on the College Street pedestrian crossing, which, which area around college is that?
That's right. That, that would be a connection from Saint Martins into the Woodland Square area. So I believe that.
Gotcha.
Believe that is seventh, that that would.
It is.
Be proposed.
At, at some point, we do need to come back to the council and maybe update them on, on where we're at. We're not quite there. Quite there yet on the, on the design and everything else, but you know, there's been some initial talks. With hopefully a public private partnership to possibly put in a. Three quarters roundabout. There, we're in the early discussions with Saint Martins University and MJR on seeing if we can make that happen. And so we're. We're being preemptive on this, on, on our part. So the, the university would have to. Give us some land in order to do, to make that happen.
So, so around Sixth Avenue and Seventh Avenue?
It's kind of a right in, right out. Situation, which is not really good for the entrance into, to Lacy Midtown. It would, it would be right there.
Plus, the, if there's a real problem with pedestrians trying to cross. Back and forth from the college or university back into Midtown.
And this becomes even more important if the, if the student housing goes in on that side of, of the Lacy Midtown side, which. Hopefully we're seeing some movement on that. And so now you'd have even more students having to try to walk across, you know, right there. That would be a, a safety hazard to say the least.
That makes sense. I, I guess the only concern would be. How the traffic would react to that being so close to Martin Way.
Yeah. So that's, that's why it's a little premature. We're doing some little traffic study to try to figure out if we can actually pull this, pull this off. It's also pretty close to Sixth, right? So it's closer to Sixth than is to College Street, but. That's why a roundabout makes sense because hopefully you're moving that traffic through. But, well, we're, like I said, we're a little early on, but we're. We have been in some initial discussions with that.
And just maybe one final comment. The takeaway there is that we recognize that there's a need to somehow facilitate better pedestrian crossing from Saint Martins campus to. Midtown. And so again, depending on where the location is ultimately going to be, that's what we're trying to facilitate.
Looking at the capital equipment fund and lodging tax fund, not a whole lot of change suggested here. Oops, I do want to point out that the lodging tax funds are all assigned. So I, I think the council is aware there is. You know, the lodging tax committee has to make recommendations to the council and the council is, has to. You know, accept their recommendations or send it back. And this is one of those kind of weird gray areas. It's not addressed in that specific area of the code. So. We don't have a lot of confidence that we could commit funds without the, the budgetary recommendation from the committee. But you know, obviously these are. Priorities for the, for the city and do carry that constraint. I'm also pointing out on this slide that I mean, C two reserves for the rack synthetic filter replacement. Of course, we've replaced all the fields. And we think we are in good shape for the next nine to ten years. We do have this similar reserve and other funds. We have a total of about two point four million dollars for rack. Field replacement. And I think that's key and worth mentioning just because. You know, we'd obviously take a lot of pride in, in the rack, but one of the reasons it's successful is because of the level of maintenance and care that we take in the rack. So. Do want to point out that we're pretty well set for the next round of synthetic field replacement. This next slide is building improvement and parks and open space. This is another, there's not a lot of change projected. I do want to point out the public art reserves. There is adequate fund balance to commit the two thousand one dollar per capita. So the total public art fund reserve will be right around two hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. So we built this up. Pretty quickly since we've reestablished the one dollar per capita funding of this reserve. And then the final fund that's included is the, the regional athletic complex capital fund. The one change here is the hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for the parking lot expansion design, which is in your two thousand twenty one budget. We're committing those funds for that purpose. So that concludes my presentation. Of course, we would recommend you adopt the ordinance. I was going to make comments about how important this is for future planning. But I think the discussion speaks for itself. I mean, it's robust conversation on really the future of, of our city and how we're planning and how the. I believe the reserves match the council's priorities and the city's priorities going forward. So again, we would recommend you adopt. The ordinance and I'd be happy to answer any further questions you might have.
I move that we adopt the ordinance number fifteen seventy five.
Second.
And moving in second to adopt ordinance fifteen seventy five relating to reserve definitions discussion. So Troy, you, you mentioned earlier that about seven hundred and fifty thousand is coming out of the two thousand nineteen. Budget. But you also said we had about five, five million additional dollars from the two thousand nineteen budget. How much more of that five million dollars is being committed or assigned?
Pretty much all of it. So in terms of unassigned.
I was trying to add up there where, where you're getting your dollars from. I didn't quite get to five million.
Yeah, it's, so it's. I don't think you would have got there. So it's, it's not that you weren't fast enough. But so of the fifty five million in the. You know, total cash. Each of those funds have a, a, a reserve policy of having two months operating reserves. So we. So we move that from the equation. So now you're getting down into the, you know. Forty five million range. The vast majority of that remaining forty five million is being committed and assigned. Through the, through what you saw. So, you know, our, our, our goal is to. Really communicate that, you know, what the future plans are for those fund balances as we.
Haven't we had the two year, two month operating reserve for a couple of years now though?
It's, it's always there. So that, the, the two month operators are. It serves a couple of purposes and we, we saw that illustrated with the COVID event that. You know, it does give us that flexibility, flexibility to not have to take. Really drastic measures when we have downturns to the economy. So it allows us to address those. But that also, that's really our checking account balance. So that is our cash flow balance. So. Some of our revenues as an example are very cyclical in nature. Property tax is probably the best example. We really receive. Ninety percent of all property tax in two payments and that happens in May and, and October. So we do need. Some of our cash to get us through those months as we, you know, get to the end of the. The, the, you know, the first half property tax payment as an example. So it is a cash flow issue as well.
Is there any other discussion?
Seeing none, it's been moved in second to adopt ordinance fifteen seventy five relating.
Mayor, if I can. My question was public art, you know, we're in the two hundred thousand plus range and that's pretty substantial. What's the process of, I mean, just by example, Hoxbury, Hoxbury Rotary did the. Military families and Lacy Rotary did the Train Depot Playground. That could be considered art. Is, is it, you know, what would, would be the process of a nonprofit or anybody for that matter that wants to do a public art project? Trying to leverage those funds.
That's, you know, that's a good question. We, we, we have been put inside this public art dollars for a while. It's up to the community. Relations committee to figure out the process to. Go through to accept public art and, and, and do more public art in Lacey. And I would suggest. That the, the community relations committee meet, you know, next year, now that those funds are, are, are starting to accumulate. And start talking about maybe some projects. Does that seem fair?
I know, I know the chairman, so the chairperson.
Exactly. Deputy Mayor?
So I have been sending ideas off to Jennifer quite a bit for Midtown on some of these. Potential art projects and would be glad to send them to. The, the chair of our. The, for you. So just look at that. the um, the chair of our, the uh for you, so just look at that um.
But don't you mean, I mean, it's been the last bit main big art project we did was was what, the the eagle?
Yeah, it was the hawk.
Hawk, yeah, the hawk, the.
So uh, yeah, there is a policy, it it the appropriate places to go to the Community Relations Committee, they have a policy. They have um priorities to either um provide public art at our major entrance ways to define our boundaries. There's also other locations in our parks that can go, and they should probably maybe revisit that process. We do have one pending art project that was on hold, and that was our compassionate community project, where we were trying to celebrate our 100,000 acts of compassion. So we had some funds assigned to that. And we do have some uh ancillary funds that we're trying to tie into making the Flag Paul's Plaza um a memorial for uh those that were lost in action during um major conflicts.
Yeah, so I I I would suggest that the um Community Relations Committee take a look at that early next year and and relook at the polls, see what what's out there. I I do think um there are some very worthy projects that can be considered public art. And since we have the dollars, it would be it would be nice to have that discussion.
Plus, I think Midtown could be made into something even more vibrant by using more public art within that area.
Absolutely agree with you, Deputy Mayor. I absolutely agree. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Uh is there one opposed? The the motion carries. Thank you so much, Troy.
Thank you.
So next up is the mayor's report, and I do have one item. Um Seth Seth Huff is um, I'm gonna be recommending his reappearance um to the Historical Commission. And and actually, this should have happened a couple of months ago. Um it sort of got lost in translation. I um, I got word that's that Seth was up for reappearance. I uh agreed that we needed to reappoint him and then um it sort of got lost in the in the shuffle. And so this is a a little bit late, but um he has still been um contributing on the Historical Commission, but we need to make it official. So I would move that we reappoint Seth Huff to the Historical Commission.
Second.
Yeah, second, it's been moving second. Is there any other discussion? Sorry, Seth, sorry this took so long. Uh, uh, Councilmember Cox, you have something? You're on mute. That's the line of 2020.
That cross line. I I'm really glad to see this put to right because Seth has just been a really wonderful member and I'm looking forward to his continued service.
Me too. I I it was just one of those things where, you know, it's, everything's crazy right now. This is the way it goes. Sorry, sorry, Seth, but at least he's still been, you know, contributing and but we'll we'll make it official. Um it's been moved in second. Any any further discussion? All in favor of reappointing Seth to the Historical Commission signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Well, Seth, we are reappointed. Thank you very much. And now we'll go to uh standing general committees. And I am up first with a Finance and Economic Development Committee, which met back on November 24th. Um, there's two items.
I do have a city manager's report.
Oh, did I skip you?
Also. It's okay, it's 2020.
Oh, city manager, sorry.
I didn't.
No.
So moved if you want to skip them.
Okay, does that count as second? I'm just kidding. Go ahead, city manager.
So this will be real quick. So as per resolution 1067, this is intergovernmental agreement approval process. So these are agreements that are under 25,000 or considered routine. And as part of my responsibility, I report those out if I sign those, so council is informed. So we had three of those in the past, say, 45 days. So one is a an agreement with the Skowalining Tribe, City of Olympia and City of Lacey for watershed planning in Wyra 11. Our commitment to that process is 11,000, I'm sorry, $10,000, and that's a one-year agreement. So that's one. The other one is an agreement with North Hurson Public Schools. Um we need buses, um that's related to our Parks and Recs program. Obviously, we're not using those at this time. However, we do have an agreement uh that we sign on an annual basis. And so what we typically do is pay the the North Hurson Public School uh District, North Hurson Public Schools, uh $1.26 per mile when we use our buses for large outings or groups. We're talking 60 or sometimes even 84 people on a bus. So that is one agreement. That's also just for one year. At some point, we'll probably integrate that into our joint use agreement with North Hurson Public Schools. And then the last one is for wildlife management with the United States Department of Agriculture. That agreement just is under about 12,400 and as an annual contract that we um participate in to manage wildlife within our park system. And so that is the end of my report.
Thank you, sorry I passed you up. Um is anything else?
That's it.
Okay, then then now I'll go on to standing general committees. Um and again, uh the Finance and Economic Development Committee met back on the November 24th. And as I was saying, there's two items, but we uh just talked about the reserve um budget uh discussion. So um I'll just be reporting out on the the third quarter financial reports. And so we got um a presentation, we're really focused on the general fund expenditures and revenues, the the utility funds, the projected labor costs and, of course, the 2021 recommendations, which means let's continue to do our budget like we've we've always done, which is a pretty conservative approach. Through the third quarter, uh the the sales tax um is actually 3.9% higher than the previous year. Um and we've had some discussions about this and um, but looking at the data, it's it's really mostly due to um the sales collections, sales tax collections related to new construction. Um there are some were some other categories that showed um some some relatively higher collections early on in in COVID. And we've talked about that, um really having people shift to to local shop shopping and and early COVID. Um we saw it, saw a pretty big bump there. But the the increases in um new construction, we've we've never really considered that a sustainable source uh of revenue. Um and we've been talking about this for a long time. City of Lacey has been growing like crazy and mostly based on new construction. Um and we actually, for the first time, and this has been recorded out, um in November, was the first time going back for a very, very, very long time. We didn't have, we didn't issue a billing permit um for a single family billing permit. And that's, you know, it's not happened um since any of us been on council. So it's it's showing that, you know, new construction is is going to be slowing down possibly. The billing permit fees through the third quarter are are down 31%, yeah, almost 450, 454,000, almost 455,000. Um and there's also some signs that general retail might be might might be slowing a bit. Um, of course, the the general merchandise stores, sales tax category is the single largest category for for sales tax. And it has to shown some small declines over the past couple of months. And then, of course, when we're talking about labor, it's obviously it's our most crucial asset that we have for the city. We have people doing the work, um being public servants. So they're our our um most critical asset, but of course, they're our most expensive ass a- asset as well. And so historically, the labor costs represent about two thirds of all the general fund uh operating expenditures. So two thirds of our general fund is going to going to labor. Um in 2021, the general fund salaries and wages has increased about 3.2% or about 677,000. Um during the most recent last 10 years, though, that general fund salary wage cost increased about 3.9%. So the the increase of 3.2% is a little lower than what we've historically had. Um we've also only looking at employee employee benefit costs. Um they've increased um for the past 10 years on on a rate of about 5.9% annually. Um in 2021, that's going to be about 3%, so almost half of what we've normally seen. So um there's some at least some good news on on that end. But of course, the the continuous changing um COVID-19 impacts and the, you know, the unknown economic futures. It it's really um important that we have a con- conservative 2020 revenue projections, and that's exactly what we've seen in our in our budget, especially on the consumption base side of things. This, you know, where we receive revenue from sales tax, Bino Tax, um admissions taxes. Uh of course, they're all expected to be lower than um normal during this health crisis and uh of course, during our hopefully soon recovery period. So uh, you know, staff recommended that we not part from our cautious approach, and that's exactly what we've done. And um and we're gonna do our best to get through 2021 um with what we just went through with our 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 budget reserve discussion and our our normal way we do business here in Lacey, which is um, you know, don't spend money we don't have, uh be conservative in our approach. And it's worked very well for the City of Lacey for a very long time. And that is my report. And next up is the General Government and Public Safety Committee, so Deputy Mayor.
So the General Government and Public Safety Committee met uh November 24th, and staff provided an update to the Lacey Library Construction Project. Uh for some of you, um you, Lacey Library has been at its current uh location for 25 years, so it was certainly due for upgrades. And then the committee recommended uh receiving an update from the Lacey Library following the construction project. We also had a presentation uh to the update on the Lacey Veterans Hub Project and um which some of you must know that the building was constructed in 1984. And uh we went through phase one um in 2014, opening with 1,200 square feet. Um and then in fi- phase two, in 2016, we expanded to 4,500 square feet. In phase three, uh we will expand the building to 8,000 square feet. And so some of the highlights of that was replacement of of the building roof siding and windows, replacement of heating, cooling, plumbing, electrical and lighting systems, accessibility improvements and reconfiguration of office space, meeting rooms and restrooms. Um and then the last uh item on the agenda was um Chief Almata um gave a report on retained stolen property. And so this is an annual uh report that is uh given and which must uh according to RCW 633210, um item two, that they must report it out. And actually, the list is the same as was in 2016, 2017, 20 and 2018 and 2019 um of the same list. So that's my report. Oh, wait, no, there's one more. I'm so sorry. Um Capital City Estates Annexation, we had a um update to that. No, we didn't. Yes, we did. Um but but it was on um what it was was happening at that time. And um the committee recommended beginning the annexation process for both the Capital City Estates and Lake Lewis Annexations. And that's it, sorry.
Thank you. Um then now we're going on to Community Relations and Public Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um so Community Relations and Public Affairs Committee met on December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day uh from 11 to 11:30, 11:32. Myself and Councilmember Cox were present. Um we had a three item agenda and our Parks Department's uh name is now Parks Culture and Recreation, has a new logo and a new website. And it'll go live here in the near future. Um the the announcement on line uh online recreation guide, um it will be included uh included in upcoming utility bill for um uh water utility ratepayers um promoting this uh in December. And um they want to make sure that everyone knew the Lacey Museum would have their own name and logo um and that would be brought up in a future date. Uh the second item was um programs update due to COVID. A lot of programs have been canceled um and but a lot have been created too at the same time. So it's it's a pretty good list, and we have a creative staff that um really, you know, um but I guess creative is the best word for it, that really get the community involved in in a different way when when you can't be in big groups. So um first one was Halloween Scavenger Hut, um Lacey Live Laugh and Learn Boxes, uh take and make kits, um cookies with Mrs. Mrs. Claus, um Zoom Santa, uh holiday lights and and stories and songs, kids at home ornaments, um and uh find hidden elephant city parks. Those are just a few of the um out of the box thinking that uh, you know, La- Lacey's really famous for, you know? This uh, no one knew this was coming and they just, you know, take off running and and uh get people still involved in their city and their parks and active and in a in a healthier lifestyle. The last one was Lacey uh um Depot. So the proud, the playground that um Lacey Rotary uh installed and passed inspection, and it'll be open at the first of January. And then other than that, I think that is it. Um the restroom, the restrooms will be open all year long. And that is my report.
Thank you. And I I do just, I really want to give a shout out to to Jen Burbage and and her department for um just a really difficult task of of dealing with COVID and and all the parks. Um, you know, we're we're so used to being able to play outside and 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 do events. And, you know, when all sudden all that changed, the need didn't go away. As a matter of fact, the need is more than ever to try to get people um to be able to communicate and interact with each other. Um and and it really fell upon our the park staff to try to figure, how are you gonna do all this stuff? Do it online and get to a point where people are gonna be enthusiastic and want to to participate. And they've exceeded every expectation. I've had such amazing feedback from um parents who said, you know, thank you so much for, you know, this event that, you know, that just happened and it, you know, it meant meant a lot. And so, you know, just a big shout out to Jen and her department for everything she's done through this very, very difficult time.
Uh, one one thing I wanted to touch on, Mr. Mayor, if I may. It's gonna be polar bear plunge time here soon, and you, everybody pretty much knows I go there every single year. It's a, you know, and it has a huge following, almost a um cult-esque uh thing, but within a positive light. And it's gonna be really sad because it was canceled. Um I'm gonna sneak down there at some point just by myself and dip my feet in there because I'm a person of tradition. And I'm not trying to encourage people to do that or join me. It's just um, it's it's something that, you know, uh maybe it's the old Marine in me and and traditional stu- stuff like with with the military is, maybe that's part of it, I don't know. That's what I'm gonna do, but I wanted to give it a shout out because a lot of uh community involvement goes in that. A lot of people go to that polar bear plunge for no other reason, just to be with their neighbors and celebrate the new year and uh all the good positive things is, you know, wiping the slate.
Hopefully, hopefully you'll be in your new place and you can jump into, maybe you can jump into uh Hicks Lake and on your on your place. Uh and I'll watch from the sidelines and 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 wave and say.
In your coach, what waving?
You know, the um, you know, the 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 recs, the culture and uh um new name and logo, uh it's, they're really creative and they're really innovative and that's that's City of Lacey right there, you know? We just, we just shift gears and and we keep going. Thanks.
Yep, thank you. So now we're gonna go on to our boards, commissions and community reports. Um I'm up first again, the 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 mayor's forum met last, this is last Friday. All my days are getting mixed up now. Um and the the really significant thing um that was going on there is uh um the the county commission, the chair of the county county commission is now, you know, been a part of these mayor's forums every, I think it's almost back to every month, at least every other month. And um and this was uh Commissioner uh Hutchins' last meeting. And so we really spent a lot of time um, you know, thanking him for his his service and everything he's he's done. He's uh, you know, that uh been a a lifelong public public servant, you know, for for ever since his, you know, first career and as in the as in the police. Um and so he's been giving to the public, it's what he does and it's what he's done for such a long time. And so I just, we all um, you know, shared some memories and and thanked him for for all those years of of public service. Um and you know, there's a lot going on right now uh across. Um, and, you know, there's a lot going on right now, uh, across the county, um, there's a lot of unknowns. And so, uh, you know, we really spend this time sort of, you know, getting advice from each other, um, uh, about how we're dealing, dealing with things, uh, and so, um, it's a, it's always a good time, you know, the lot, lot of those, those conversations are, um, are really sort of heartfelt conversations where you sort of had the opportunity to really, um, say, you know, what do you, you know, here's a, here's a big issue that we're dealing with, what do you guys, how do you guys, you know, what's your advice? And we've, all the, um, the mayors have become really close. Uh, it's an interesting time in, in the history of, of Thurston County where, um, this is the longest the mayors, the, the mayors from all the cities have been mayor at the same time. Um, and so, uh, usually in Olympia, they, they serve like one term and they're, and it switches over. So the fact that Cheryl Selby, who actually couldn't make it, it was her birthday, and she had a surprise birthday that her girls took her off to and had some events, so Cheryl wasn't there, but, you know, this is a, um, been a time where the, the, the Mayor of Yon and Dakota and, you know, Rainier, we, we, we're all becoming pretty, pretty close and where we can really, you know, talk to each other and, and, and discuss what's going on and, and get really good advice. And so it, it's been a, it's been really great, and it's sad to see Hutch go. He's, you know, he's, he's done a lot for our community, but, um, you know, we're gonna be moving on and, um, you know, it was, it was a, it was, it was a good time to, to thank him and everything he's done. So, that, that's the Mayor's Forum. Uh, the Transportation Policy Board, um, met last, uh, I think it was last Wednesday, on December, December 9th. Um, and there's really just two major items that I, I want to talk about. Um, the prior meeting, we, we kept on bringing up, you know, um, there's, there's always a shortage of funds when it comes to transportation projects, and, and hopefully we're gonna finally see a, a major transportation package coming from our federal government. And, you know, and so we're, we're trying to get all of our ducks in a row if that's gonna happen, and there's, there's definitely a lot of transportation things, um, a lot of roads and bridges that have been disrepair, really all across the United States, and we, we have our, our own issues here in Thurston County. But the, the question came up about tax increment financing and, and what does that mean? And, and is that, is that a tool that can be used, um, here in the state of Washington? And so, um, we actually had Candace Brock, who's formerly with the City of Lacey, who now is with Association of Washington Cities, give a, a presentation on, um, tax increment financing. Um, and it was a really good presentation, and what it really comes down to is the state legislature is gonna have to take some action on this if it's, if we're gonna be able to do this in the state of Washington. Uh, this is a, a tool that other states have used, you know, sort of quite successfully. It, it kind of goes along the lines of what we've all talked about at the Gateway and, and the, the tool that the state has said, um, for retail sales, if, if a area is producing, uh, new dollars in retail sales, they can use a percentage of those dollars to repay back debts, um, to, to do some infrastructure improvements. And we've talked about that a lot here, here in the City of Lacey and possibly in the Gateway area. And we've talked about this recently on hopefully needing the, the state to extend that, um, option for Gateway. It, it's, it's somewhat similar along those lines. It's basically based off, um, be able to pay it back over time. Um, and so it was a really good presentation, uh, and you can find that presentation on the Thurston Regional Plan Council's website. Um, the other item that really took up, uh, a lot of the time is to talk about next year's agenda. There's, there are so many things going, so many irons in the fire right now, and, uh, unfortunately, one of the things that we've seen, um, with COVID is a lot of things, a lot of projects and other things that, um, normally would keep up with, um, didn't, kind of got pushed back. And so, um, there are a lot of projects out there that need to, need to happen. And one of the things that we, one of the things that we've seen from COVID is, and it's a, it's a big concern that I think we all need to, um, understand, is that the workforce that has typically done projects, um, we've, we've lost a lot of that workforce. Um, and that is, it's a, it's a big concern as well, um, for, for our projects that we, you know, that keeps our community going. Um, and so, and then on top of that, there's been all these new issues that's been raised that COVID has exposed. And so, talking about next year, there are so many things that, that are before us, we have to put some sort of priority on it. And so we talked about, a lot about agenda planning for, for a long time and, and what, why are we gonna focus on for 2021? And hopefully as we, we pull out this, uh, this health crisis and start a recovery. Um, and so that, that took a long time, and then of course we got a, um, update on the profile, which is the, the data, the, um, trends analysis for Thurston County for all the projects that sort of did happen this, this past year, and there's a lot that goes on there, but, uh, I'm sure maybe Malcolm under the TRPC, uh, report can talk a little bit about that. So, that is my report in the Transportation Policy Board, and now I'm gonna turn it over to Deputy Mayor.
Uh, so the, uh, Joint Animal Services Commission, Jazzcom, met December 7th, and we approved the 2021, um, budget, uh, for the animal services in the amount of $2,370,181. And of course, this means that we will be using 120,000 of reserves, um, but we, uh, that will be reduced by 70,000 annually so that by 2024, it will reflect the actual cost of service, uh, to the jurisdictions. And then we also, um, recommended the following license fees, uh, for Olympia, Lacey and Tumwater and Thurston County would go up by $2. Um, so, and dogs for us, dog spayed, um, to be spayed will be $18. Unaltered, um, licensing for dogs is 30, cats spayed is $12, and unaltered, um, cats licensing is $20. The ILA, um, that will be sent to the jurisdictions for approval, um, had the following, following policy, um, recommendations, and one is the ability to add an additional member to the board if so desired. Um, and then also, um, to contract for additional services to other entities if it's beneficial. We already do that with JBLM, but we, um, there may be other way, additional services. Um, and then also, um, we, uh, recommended that Jazzcom set licensing fees so that they kind of know what they need, and then we would, the jurisdictions would just have to approve it rather than go through the whole process. Um, for Lot, uh, Lot met December 9th in the evening, and then we asked for a summation of the Septic to Sewer Rebate Program for individuals within jurisdictions, uh, for the year, and those slides are available if the council members would like to see them. Uh, Olympia used the rest of this year's rebate for the Coast, Coach Post Trailer Park, um, which covers 54 low-income individual residents. And the designated program allows one jurisdiction to utilize the additional years, um, year ends funds if the other two jurisdictions have not used their full amounts. The Board authorized Executive Director to enter into a contract with parametrics of Pualip, uh, in the amount not to exceed $1,168,990.43 for engineering, construction support services for the Biological Process Improvements Project. And we au- authorized the award of a contract for the Martin Way Reclaim Water Plant Improvements, um, Aeration Blowing Improvement Project to the Low Res- uh, Responsible and Responsible Bidder Peas and Sons of Tacoma, uh, for the amount of $600,854,200, uh, 24 cents. And this also includes sales tax. And then we, we authorized a lot of things, so here we go. We authorized the Executive Director to enter into a contract with HDR Engineering in the amount not to exceed $183,293, uh, plus tax for the next phase of work in the cost of service analysis. And then we had highlights, um, at the end of the year, staff performances, um, which have been compiled in a short video presentation. And because the COVID-19 pandemic has been so difficult, um, and challenging for the Lot staff, uh, but they, they decided to do it in a video rather than talk about it and stuff, it made it easier. Um, staff rose to the occasion adapting to new safety and health protocols because remember it's 24/7, they have to be on, uh, staffing. Um, they limited onsite staffing and remote work. And then despite unusual working conditions, Lot met or mission to provide the essential public service of treatment wastewater and of treating wastewater and meeting our stringent regulatory requirements. And then also made progress on organizational development and a number of other priority activities. Olympia Region Clean Air Agency, or ORCA, also met December 9th in the morning, and we had a summary of the Community Toxics Project, which the primary objective is to evaluate the level of hazardous air pollutants or, or HAP associated with woodsmoke PM 2.5. And then a secondary objective was to improve and evaluate actrally measurement methods and provide students with research opportunities. And this gets quite technical, um, so I'm just gonna touch on a few highlights. So, Ca- Carbon Monoxide and PM 2.5 are highly cor- uh, correlated. Um, relative to PM 2.5 wildfire, uh, pollution, air pollution emitted less carbon monoxide than wood stoves. UV absorption indicates the presence of PaaS or polycyclic arom- aromatic hydrocarbon, and included in these are napo- uh, naphthalene and anthracine. And, uh, many of these, um, PaaS are found in coal and oil deposits. And then, what other thing is? And the carbon monoxide and UV relationship is the same in summer and winter. And then also indicates that, uh, PaaS are transformed, oxidized, but still present, present in wildfire plume. And when they're oxidized, they become more toxic. And then let me see what else is, um. So, remember when we talk about some of these, uh, carcin- uh, these hazardous air pollutants, they exceed carcinogenic screening levels for several pollutants and wood smoke, P- PM 2.5, um, as well as, uh, other cancer risks. And then, let's see, they were, uh, found in Lacey. Eceline oxide was added to the list of chemicals to analyze after the projects, uh, started. And these particular, um, chemicals were found in Lacey at our monitoring site at levels similar to those in Seattle. As for monthly air quality for the months of October and November, there were 28 good days and three moderate days for October and two moderate days for November. And that's my report.
Thank you.
And I wish I could tell you all the rest of the chemical stuff and stuff because it's great.
If you say so, Deputy Mayor. Next up is Councilmember Cox.
I can't wait to see what we write on her cake when she retires. Oh, my goodness. Um, I just have one report tonight, and that is on the Regional Housing Council, which met just before this meeting. Um, the, the cities of Rainier and Tonino have decided not to take part in the Regional Housing Council. And if Council will, will recall, we recently approved a draft inter-local agreement that had them listed there. So, we're gonna have to go and strike those two from the agreement, and it's expected to come back to Council in January, and I see Scott nodding his head, so, um, that's the only change in the agreement, and it's just so that we have a clean document, but I didn't want you all to be surprised about it. Um, there was considerable discussion tonight about the, um, City of Olympia's plan to open a safe parking mitigation site for people living in cars and recreational vehicles. Uh, the site is at the former police shooting range near the intersection of Carpenter Road and Martin Way. And at present, they're talking about accommodating 20 cars and about 20 RVs, and the site would have 24-hour supervision. Olympia hopes to open it by March. That, um, with that said, there's lots of questions remaining, such as impacts on Lacey's Police Department, whether they'll have onsite food delivery. Um, Housing Council members agreed that a robust, uh, public engagement program needs to happen with nearby residents and businesses, and encouraged, um, the group, uh, well, the Subcommittee of the Council that's working on this to get on that sooner than later. Um, another area, Tumwater and Olympia are working on renter protection plans. I think Tumwater will have some actions going on that in January, at least at committee level. And in terms of, uh, renter assistance, we learned that the Community Action Council has allocated $2.6 million, which was spent to help 693 households pay back rent. That's something like cumulatively over 2,000 months of back rent that was paid up through that amount. Um, the state's eviction moratorium is set to end this month, however, we understand the Governor's Office is proposing to, uh, extend rental assistance through June. Um, and let's see, although the current rental assistance allocation has been spent, the Community Ca- Action Council is starting a waiting list to ensure that people get help as soon as the funds become available. So, if you out there know somebody who's in trouble and needs help, please advise them to contact Community Action Council and get on that list. Um, starting tomorrow, Olympia is going to begin construction on what's called microhouses, and these little structures will replace the, um, blue tents that you see downtown at the mitigation site. They're sturdier and, I think, more secure for the people who are living in them, and certainly more durable than tents. And, um, as the mayor said, uh, Commissioner, County Commissioner Hutchings has had a lot of farewells, and, and today's meeting was no exception. Uh, I think the big, uh, shout out that we gave to him was that if it, if it were not for his bridge building with the cities, the Regional Pl- Housing Council would not have happened. Um, the cities were on a track where, you know, we were concerned about not having a, a say in how federal and state housing grant money was being spent, and we were trying to do our own thing to increase our role in that. And we eventually realized that we, we're not gonna be able to get very far with, uh, undertaking any sort of projects without the county. So, to his credit, he brought the county staff along, and now we have a council that is poised to do some really significant work. So, thank you, Commissioner Hutchings. And that's my report.
Thank you. That's very, that's very true. It was definitely a Hutch that stepped up and brought the county to the table, um, on, on that issue. Uh, Councilmember Greenstein.
So, a couple of reports today. Um, TCOM, Thurston 911, just a couple of things from that meeting. Uh, radio replacement program is well underway. Uh, the design and system assessment is complete, and they have actually started on some of the civil work to get the tower sites ready, um, for installation of the new equipment. So that's moving along well. Um, the only other thing I want to report on from that meeting is gonna make some changes in staffing, um... Um currently, the sheriff and all of South County are on one channel. The operators, the workers in at the nine-one-one center are overwhelmed on that that work that channel, it's just too much traffic. So that is gonna be split into two separate um channels, basically, which will relieve some of that workload. Uh it's also going to allow the um restoring of the data position that was taken out. Um I would say, I think it was last year or maybe the year before that. That should be a a good, the police department should be pretty pleased with that because I know it's uh something they they liked having. The ability to get the data on cars they pulled over and things like that, so that position's going to be restored in next year's budget. So that's what I have for TCOM. Uh EMS, emergency medical services met today. And a big chunk of the conversation was about the vaccine plan. So currently, there's nine hundred and seventy, seventy-five doses of the vaccine in Thurston County. As you can imagine, that does not go very far. The initial one A group that get that will get the vaccine are medical workers. And um emergency responders who deal directly with covid patients. So that would mean your paramedics, your EMS, because you don't know who you're gonna be dealing with, but could likely deal with directly with covid. Emergency room nurses and doctors, as well as the nurses and doctors on the covid floors at Providence and at um. Uh Capitol. So tho- that'll be the one A group. This is not enough doses even to cover the that one A group, so and keep in mind that. It's two, a two-dose vaccine, so nine hundred and seventy-five vaccines doesn't go very far. You gotta cut that number in half for how many people can actually get vaccinated at this point. There'll be more coming, uh the the expectation is that the second vaccine, Moderna, will be approved tomorrow. So hopefully shipments of that'll start soon and that'll start ramping things up. Um they did a survey of all of the EMS personnel, so paramedics and all of those people. And seventy-five percent of the responders have actually said that they would be help, would be willing to help in the vaccine process. Once we have enough vaccine to start vaccinating the public. So that was, that was a really good, good number. Um. The second, the other, only other thing I wanted to mention is hospital diversion. I've talked about this in the past about the hospitals getting so busy that they have to divert patients and can't accept more patients. So EMS staff had a meeting with both hospitals uh recently. And has worked out a pretty good arrangement that's been working much better for the last couple of months. So now when the hospitals go on diversion, there's a round robin process where they still take people that are emergency. Um and it's actually seemed to work pretty well. Thing, you know, we'll we'll see how it goes, their time will tell, but right now it seems to be working better than it has in the past. So that is my report.
Thank you. Now to Councilmember Miller.
Uh I do have a report, uh Thurston Regional Planning met on December fourth. And uh it appears as if transportation is and infrastructure are taking up a lot of our our meeting time. Uh we we did get a brief in on regards in regards to the impacts of I five through the Nisqually River Delta. Studies have been done there and uh some of the highlights are assessing addressing traffic congestion, flood risk. And habitat habitat impacts of I five through north uh North Thurston County, uh that's that's a priority. Part of the the phase of work is the Nisqually Indian Tribe and Washington State Department of Transportation partnered with the United States Geological Survey. To assess hydrology, uh sediment transport and, you know, habitat impact. Uh the, I I think one, one of the main takeaways from from this is that, you know, that area. Is 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 said to be a hundred-year flood zone, but it's it's flooding more than that. Um part of the reason is because the freeze level has risen uh over six hundred and fifty feet. And uh we've, you know, sea level rise is said to play a part in that, but I think it's more. Uh you know, the the freeze level than than it is sea level rise, but. Uh you know, the the study will be out in twenty twenty, early twenty twenty-one, so we'll have more information then, but. Uh one of the, one of the main takeaways in this is that, you know, uh the Orca population depends on the salmon run. That comes through that area, uh and so this is, this would be detrimental to them. Uh and 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 one of the things that that this study is going to to show is that. If we don't do something about it, um not only will we lose, uh you know, precious land, but we'll also lose Orca. In that um in not doing something about it. Um the preliminary results highlight the habitat impacts of constrained channel, altered sediment transport and compounding effects of sea level rise. The uh one of the the primary deltas in that area uh is is actually washing away. The curve, the bend in the curve is is getting worse, and so what's happening is eventually it'll push through the land. Uh and if that happens, uh you know, you know, totally change the complexion of of that area, and there actually is a building uh in the way. And so um without some kind of action, um you know, that that structure will be demolished. As you guys know, the, you know, these, uh we had a flood there earlier this year. Um and you know, that is the second flood, I believe, in in twenty years. Uh twenty-six years, because we had one ninety-six. And so that's supposed to be every hundred years, but uh at this point, the way things are going, it's gonna. It could flood as little as every seventeen years, uh which brings us to the, you know, the. The possibility and the and the thought process of, you know, what do we do about I five? Uh in that area, it it cannot stay and remain a lowland the way it is. Um because it's it's actually becoming a danger to and part of the danger of the of the area, so. Um to raise I five up. Um is is one of the the ideas that's on the table um at a cost of exorbitant costs. Over four billion dollars to to do some of the uh the fill and elevation. Um of 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 this of this freeway, I don't know what kind of impact that's gonna have on us as a community, seeing how I five is pretty much the only way in and out of here. Uh so that is in addition to some of the other improvements that need to happen a little further down I five, south I five. Uh coming through our corridor and uh transitioning through through um, you know, Olympia and Tom Water, so. Uh the the infrastructure costs of just in our community alone are just rising. You know, every time we have a meeting, it's like we need more money for infrastructure, we need to make the changes. Uh that are gonna bring us into the future, and so this is gonna be one of our big legislative asks. Uh in this upcoming session is, you know, we need more dollars to to um. To, you know, improve our infrastructure. Uh otherwise, we eventually maybe, you know, we won't, won't be able to get out of here. Or, you know, only go south and not be able to head north. Uh and not only that, the the areas in in that low land um may not be usable. Uh in the future, if we if we don't do something about it. So uh financially, you know, the ask is is going to be, you know, please give us money to. To make the improvements that we need to make. Of course, a lot of studies have to be done, the studies take time. Uh and unfortunately, that's time that, you know, that. I I'm not sure how many studies you need to 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 prove that, you know, we we need to fix things, I. You know, I fix things at my house all the time, know that there's no study, there's no, all my wife studies, and then she tells me, you know, uh what she found. I guess that's, but that's, that can take five minutes, and so.
Well, welcome to government, it's broken, uh we need to study, see how we can fix it.
So uh.
It it almost sounds like uh that area with the I five um studies that they could help each other.
Yeah, you know, that's the whole, that's the whole plan, that's the whole plan for that areas, we need to figure out that that bridges in particular.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's gonna have to be raised, I don't know. You know, the 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 cost is high, but you know, the 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 benefits are gonna be immense, and then also, you know, lane additions. Um are another uh area that we're uh that seem to be, you know, sucking up meeting time. Uh in in so, uh a lot of TRPC's efforts right now are focused on, you know, widening and and making our freeways. Uh safer through this corridor. And so we are, you know, partnering with uh other jurisdictions, especially the tribe. To discuss these things and and make sure that, you know, we have a solid plan going forward, so that when we do ask, um our our ask is heard. Uh another thing that came out in the meeting is uh a thing that's called the profile. And the profile is a a document that's put together uh about, you know, things. The the Thurston County profile, education, jobs, unemployment, um it's been published every year since nineteen eighty-two. And uh it is out there for you to look at on the TP- TRPC website, it's got statistical profiles, land use, population demographic. Housing, transportation, employment, all the things that you, you know, kind of look at before you move to an area and uh should know. You know, once you live in an area. Uh there are, there were some, some uh, I, if you guys remember the last time I briefed on 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 this group. Uh we talked about, you know, the improvements that uh were were looked at for the towns of Yokota, Rainier. Tonino, Nisqually, uh and the Transportation Policy Board has has given us a thumbs up. And uh a recommendation for those improvements, hopefully I'll have something more for you on the next meeting, after the next meeting, which is on the the eighth. Um I have a lot of statistics about uh, you know, sea level rise and and um, you know, ice melt. And and all these different things um that play a role in what we're trying to to do in this area. Uh I'll I'll spare you all those things at this point in time, but I will brief on those in the, after my next meeting. Uh so we can see uh what the report bears out, that's that's coming out early next month. Uh and then uh another uh committee of mine is a TCCAT Thurston County Coalition Against Trafficking. And uh they will be having their community con- conversation, uh how we can, you know, combat, you know, human trafficking in this area. You guys know this is a major trafficking zone because of the the, you know, there's so many exits out of here. You know, you can, you can get on the freeway, you can hit, there's I ninety, there's I five, there's ports. Um whenever you live in a a port community or near water, um you you have an an increased. Uh risk because you have so many ways in and out. And that is why the I five corridor is such a big trafficking hub, and so uh we'll be getting together in January, I don't think a date has been set yet. At least that I know, not that I know of, uh but you have the community conversation to keep it, you know, top of mind. For people that, you know, there are people being trafficked, children are missing. Um you know, we uh i- in the middle of this pandemic, you know, it's still happening, it just never, it just doesn't seem to ever really stop. Uh but um you know, we keep fighting against it because nobody wants to see a kid go missing. Ever, you know, and uh to bounce back from from being trafficked takes a long time. And that's time that that kid doesn't get to go to school, or that person doesn't get to live the life that they could have lived otherwise. Every trafficking victim has an alternate life that they could have had if it wasn't for, you know, uh some sick person. You know, trying to take advantage of them, so uh that community conversation will be held in January, and that is my report.
Thank you. Thank you for that unfortunate reminder. Um Councilmember Stedman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um Community Action Council, um. Just uh the agenda here, I lost it for a second. I already um reported on the uh exit um audit, no findings, so that's good, we had the. C E O evaluation. Um I've heard in other reports and throughout this meeting, Community Action Council several times, and the. Millions of dollars and the tens of thousands of lives they've affected positively. And I just want to give a a shout out to the staff because all these monies had to be spent, a vast majority of them had to be spent. Within a certain amount of time where they would lose that funding. So staff was just working feverishly to um, you know, es- essentially change people's lives and um for the better. Um so other than that, um nothing really significant, other than the the exit finding. Um and uh and the, you know, the um promotion and the awareness brought up in the meeting about all the monies being spent. Um as far as uh SWAC, um I'm at the end of my term. And so they'll need a um uh some contact from the city and the and you you ma- mayor. Recommending if I uh continue another term. Um besides that, the only thing I wanted to do was show this T-shirt here, do my best Superman impression there. Everybody um on this council knows Tony uh Gallegos. Um I know him as coach because he coached my, I coached with him, uh my son and his son. Um he's also, you know, he was the um commissioner for Hispanic Affairs for State of Washington. Um the list goes on and on, uh Community Youth Services. Um you know, he's, he's this active part of the community, um and what really makes Lacey Lacey. And his son uh was diagnosed with uh testicular cancer. And so Roman Strong, um you know, say his name, he's he's gonna be a great example, he's gonna be a great cancer survivor. He's gonna give other people hope. Um it's bad enough, we have childhood cancer like uh. Neuroblastoma and stuff like that, have the several buddies that have su- the sons and daughters that deal with that. Um but the next biggest thing is when you're in your early twenties and dealing with cancer. And cancer is affected every single one of us. Um so anyways, I just want to give Roman a big shout out. Um he's my uh uh, how would you say it, my, I guess my um. Uh my biggest uh uh role model and and hero uh of late. And uh like like I said, he's gonna be ju- um helping people. Um with their struggles and similar struggles that he's going through, that they're going through, and help them through them. So anyways, that was it, I hope I tried to cut it short, but I felt it was worthy to bring up.
Please give him my best too, and and I'm I'm sure, you know, his dad's just amazing, he's done so much for our community and um. Uh what what a role model his his dad's been, so I'm I'm sure he has the support he needs and. Um we'll be wishing, he'll be in our thoughts and prayers uh through this holiday season for sure.
Tony actually works for uh with Brian, so with my son.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Okay, we're down to our last uh. Committe report for this, for the twenty twenty, we're gonna kick this twenty twenty out, out, never say it, see it again, hopefully. So Councilmember Kunkel, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh so the V C B board uh has been discussing. New proposed legislation that could potentially sweep the lodging taxes our state collects for purpose of. Uh budgeting improved to promote tourism and commerce in our community and may make that tax part of the general fund instead. Uh that's what we're hearing, and that's what all the buzz is within our board. Uh for the Lacey Chamber, Lacey Chambers' next forum is gonna be January sixth. And we will have a guest speaker who is a lobbyist for the Association of Washington Business. And last but not least, our Gold Star Family Memorial Board gained a new member director. Uh recently, uh Stuart Ridgeway has joined our board. And as part of our fundraising efforts, we now have a memorial challenge coin designed ready for production. Courtesy of a local provider, uh Coinforce. Foundation is now taking pre-orders for the coins and seen a lot of great public support. And you can learn more from that at uh Gold Star Memorial Foundation of Lacey dot com. And I'm short and sweet tonight, so that is my report. Thank you.
Can can you back up real real quick about the V C B? They're they're worried about LTAC dollars.
Trade that. There there's uh, there's proposed legislation that could divert those funds to the general fund. Uh I don't know if it's gonna come to fruition, that's all I know, is that somebody is proposing legislation to uh to make that happen.
Wow, so the the legislation of the state would collect all those and then dole it out that way instead? Don't know. Well, that one, that's, that would be a, that would be a massive change. Um yeah, so we'll definitely have to keep an eye on that one, and Scott, can you put that on the list uh where we talked to Brian about? Please. Okay, well, then that is finally the end of our agenda. On our last council meeting of twenty twenty, and um first of all, I just want to. Thank this council um for an extremely difficult year. Um and we we have two new council members, this is not how a normal council year goes, I swear. This is, this is not how a normal year goes, and it's been uh, you know, really difficult. Um for us to be away. for us to be away from each other this much. You know, we're, a lot of our decisions that we make for our community and the discussions that happen happen in person. And when we, when we talk and we're talking things through and we can look each other in the eye and, and have a discussion. And we haven't been able to do that this year because we're on Zoom, you know, and, and so that's, it's been tough to be able to do the, the work of the people when we're, we're only can do our business online. And so hopefully at some point next year, we can get to a point where we, we can get back in and and having those conversations because they really are an important part of, of doing the business for the city of Lacey. And so, but I want to, you know, thank both Councilmember Miller and Councilmember Kunkel for for hanging in this very, very difficult first year you've been on, on council. And hopefully we'll never, you know, see another year like this in our lifetimes because it's just been one thing after another in 2020. We all, you know, want this year to be over as soon as possible and turn the calendar so we get on to a new year because there's all the memes out there about 2020. They're all ring true. Councilmember Cox, you got something?
I, I just like, in addition to thanking council, I'd really like to thank our staff for coming through what was a hard year. And that you've come through like champs and I really, really appreciate that. I know it's been helping everybody.
That's so true. I mean, it's, it's really been all on our staff to try to figure out not only how do we, how do we continue to provide the services for the city of Lacey that makes our, makes our city so special and one of the best places to live in the United States. And that's just, not me saying it, that's data telling us that. So and it really does come down to the, the people from the city of Lacey who, who do the work every single day, that those public servants, you know, we say it every year at the, at the employee recognition, how much they mean to us. And, you know, I think this year, more than ever, they've, they've shown why Lacey is such a special place to live, work, have, have a business. And, and, you know, and thank you, Mr. City Manager. I, I know it's been a tough year on, on you as well. We've had a lot of conversations about how, how difficult things have been and and how it just kept coming at us, you know, it's one thing after another. No, no one can prepare you for a year like we've had. You just have to hope that the decisions that you're making are, are the best possible decisions for your community. And there's a lot of trust that goes along. There's a lot of counting on each other. And one of the things I'm, I am really proud about is, is how our community came together this year. You know, we had members of our community that donated PPP, you know, protective equipment and you know, it was just, there's so many acts of compassion and everything. And then we, all the, all the difficulties we had under the, the, the social unrest over the the inequalities that we, we've, that came to the spotlight and all, all those pent up anger, I think that we've had and within our communities for, for a long time. And there's no playbook for any of, for any of this. We just are doing the best we can. And I, I am really proud of, of our staff. I'm proud of this council for rising to this occasion and, and continuing to have Lacey, you know, just be an shining example of what good government and what a great place to live is all about. And we, we see it all the time. And I just want to thank the community, thank everyone. You know, I'm, I'm so eager for 2020 to be over and us to turn, turn the page here. But until we get to the end of the year, I just hope everyone please stay safe. You know, wear your mask, try to social distance. The, the vaccine is, is here. It's going to take a while for it to be distributed. But when it, when it is here, hopefully we can, you know, have confidence in it. We can get back to normal at some point, you know, next year. So until then, everyone stays. Stacy, you have something, Councilmember?
I do.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Happy holidays, everyone. That's mine.
Yep. Merry Christmas.
Yeah, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And a special thanks to our city manager who has been the proverbial glue that has held everything together. You want to talk about irons in the fire and, and doing a balancing act? I, I think we, we should give our city manager a lot of credit for what he has had to contend with this entire COVID year. So thank you, Scott. Thank you for, for doing what you do.
On behalf of staff, I just want to say thank you to council because as you know, the relationship between council and staff is critical. You guys showed tremendous leadership early on to help our small business community. And really just collaborating with your fellow neighbors too. That's very important. We've had a very good regional collaboration in dealing with this public health crisis. And so we're not in the woods yet, but I think we all have hope on the horizon. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay. Happy holidays, everyone. Happy New Year. Until next time, as always, you keep it classy, Lacey. I'll call this meeting adjourned. See ya.